Caucus before formally calling our legislative session to order. So we'll begin, we'll call our meeting to order at 6:00 PM. Mr. Parker will lead us in roll call. The invocation this evening will be led by Vice President Green. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilwoman Rawls. Communications this evening, we do have one amendment, but we will have a presentation by Mr. Mike Walsh of the Central Pennsylvania MLK Day of Service. Unfortunately, Ms. Charlotte Katzenmoyer from Capital Region Water is unable to join us this evening, but we will again try to reschedule her for a future date. We will then open the floor for courtesy of the floor, followed by approval of minutes. These minutes are from the legislative session that was held on December 13th of 2022. Next, we will hear reports of committees. The first report will come from me on behalf of the Administration Committee on the work session of January 3rd, 2023. The next report you will hear will be from Chair Green on behalf of the Budget and Finance Committee on the work session of January 3rd, 2023. And the final report this evening, you will hear from Chair Rodriguez on behalf of the Public Safety Committee on the work session of January 3rd, 2023. We have three ordinances for first reading. Bill 1 of 2023, Bill 2 of 2023, and Bill 3 of 2023. We have one, or excuse me, we have no ordinances for amendment. We have one ordinance for final passage. That's Bill 14 of 2022, which we will vote upon. We will then move to resolutions. Resolution 77 of 2022, we will vote upon. Resolution 78 of 2022, we will vote upon. Resolution 79 of 2022, we will vote upon. And Resolution 80 of 2022, we will vote upon. Resolution 1 of 2023 will move to the Administration Committee. Resolution 2 of 2023 will also move to the Administration Committee. Resolution 3 of 2023 will move to the Building and Housing Committee. And Resolution 4 of 2023 will move to the Administration Committee. Council members, is there any old business for discussion this evening? Okay, seeing and hearing none, any new business?
Yes, Madam President. Wanted to briefly discuss the 11 new officers sworn in on the 5th.
Okay, thank you. Any other new business?
Um, excuse me, I'll just make a reminder for folks that as we're still in the middle of our winter season, too, that lie heap and other programs are available for low-income residents that are in need of assistance throughout these winter seasons.
Okay, thank you. Any other new business? Seeing and hearing none, then we will adjourn. So we will officially call our legislative session to order at 6:00 PM. Thank you, everyone. The time is 6:00 PM. I would officially like to call our legislative session to order. Mr. Parker, could you please call the roll?
Yes. Ms. Daniels?
Here.
Ms. Green?
Present.
Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Majors?
Here.
Ms. Rawls?
Present.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Present.
And Ms. Bowers?
Present, thank you. The invocation this evening will be led by Vice President Green.
Thank you, President Bowers. If we could all just take a moment of time and a moment of silence for all those in our nation and here in Harrisburg that have suffered from a loss, and also just a moment of silence for anyone and everyone who's going through battles, those seen battles and the unseen battles. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Green. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilwoman Rawls. Thank you, Councilwoman Rawls. For communications this evening, we will hear a presentation from Mr. Mike Walsh on behalf of the Central Pennsylvania MLK Day of Service. You may need to turn on the microphone, the gray button in the middle, and please speak directly into it. Thank you.
I'm sorry, yeah, you went, there you go. Thank you.
How's that? Does that work?
That's fine, thank you.
All right, thank you. I want to thank you, Madam President, and all members of council for the opportunity to talk to you tonight about the Central PA MLK Day of Service. And we're excited that on January 16th, this coming Monday, Pennsylvanians will come together to honor Dr. King's life and his legacy by spending some time and service to others and engaged in the community. It's part of the National Day of Service that is in its 27th year. President Bill Clinton signed legislation to make the King Holiday, which became a federal holiday in 1983, a day of service. Senator Harris Wofford, who was then representing Pennsylvania and who was an advisor to King, helped pass the legislation because he believed that, you know, the holiday was not a day for us to sit at home on the couch and watch TV. That wasn't what we should do to honor Dr. King, but rather we should join together and serve in the community to engage in dialogue. And that's what has been happening across the country for 27 years, and that's what we helped start here in Central Pennsylvania about 14 years ago. It's pretty exciting this year that we're celebrating an anniversary, 60th anniversary of the March on Washington, the March for Jobs and Freedom that brought hundreds of thousands to the nation's capital. And we all remember the "I Have a Dream" speech and how that still resonates with us today. But what Dr. King also talked about in that speech was how we have to make real the promise of democracy. He talked about the promissory note, which was defaulted, and that it, you know, the check of insufficient funds, you know, had come due. And what we're focusing on this year is jobs, housing, literacy, and voting as part of our theme. And we're excited that at the Alexander Grass Campus for Jewish Life, we will have an opening ceremony a little after 9 o'clock on Monday. And we begin today with an invitation to all of you. We hope all of you will join us, and anyone who's listening will join us for that opening ceremony. Appreciate if you were able to make it and hear from some folks in the community, some faith leaders, who will talk about the Day of Service and talk about what is happening throughout Harrisburg and the region on that day. So we're pretty excited also that there's a jobs and housing fair that's going to take place there from 9:00 to 1:30. We encourage anyone who might be looking for employment, might be looking for more, you know, secure housing opportunities to please come and join us on that day. I did provide you each with some flyers that we invite you to distribute to your constituents because there are, you know, employers that will be showing up, nonprofits and others who will have information, recruiters onsite that I think will be beneficial to everyone. So that's what we're doing at the Alexander Grass Campus. That's the former Tashi Buildings up on North Second Street. And we invite you to be there between that, you know, for that opening ceremony a little after 9:00. And then there's volunteer activities and the housing fair and the jobs fair and arts and crafts for kids. There's lots of things to do there. There'll be a discussion that the Reverend Earl Harris and Rabbi Mark Klein are engaging in. That will be discussed, the strong relationship that's existed between the African-American and Jewish communities throughout the civil rights era and to today. There'll be a movie, Race to be Human, that'll be played there, and there'll be a discussion around that. So there's lots of things, and it's all on our website, centralpamlkday.org. And in addition to the Alexander Grass Campus, there are other things that you can do in the area. There are 20 copyhouse conversations that are taking place, and they're all listed on the website. So lots in town around Harrisburg that'll be hosting folks reading about Dr. King's life and engaging in conversation. And so we're excited about those. There's blood donation drives happening in the region and lots of nonprofits, many here in Harrisburg, some that you know, like Recycle Bicycle and others, that every year host volunteers give an opportunity for people to give something back on King Day. So it's pretty exciting for us that so many people get engaged. But really, being engaged on King Day is just the first step because it's a day off for a lot of people, and it is an entryway to community engagement. It's an entryway to service. But it's just that for us, an entryway. And what we're really focusing on, too, is thinking about how we carry that message throughout the year, 365 days of MLK. How do we engage with the community to help address issues and concerns that don't go away just because King Day is over? So that's been our focus two last couple of years with the MLK Day of Service. So, President Bowers, that's an overview of some of the things that are happening on Monday. Again, we really do hope that you would join us, that you and your constituents would take advantage of the jobs and housing fair and look at the volunteer opportunities that are happening all across the area and all across the region. So, you know, if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them. And again, I just want to thank you for letting us share the information because it's all a result of people just volunteering their time and coming together. And while we work on it for months and months, right now, people are just beginning to think about, hey, I got off Monday. What am I going to do with the family? What can I do, you know, what can I bring my children to? So while we prepare for weeks and months, we know that right now is really the time when people are just beginning to think about what they're doing Monday. And so we appreciate this opportunity and this invitation.
Oh, no problem. Thanks so much. I do have one question. I know you mentioned the website, but is it the preference for volunteers to sign up on the website for the different projects that they're interested in volunteering for for the day?
Yes, on the website. When you get to the website, it says volunteer here, and you click a button, and it lists all of the things that are happening and how many volunteers they need, what time it's taking place, where the location is, what the volunteer would be doing, and a place to register. So again, it's centralpamlkday.org, and all the information's on.
Thank you very much. Thanks so much for your time and energy put forth for the 14th Annual Central PA MLK Day. So hopefully, those listening and watching are on their way to the website to pick an opportunity to volunteer. Thank you very much.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
As I mentioned during our caucus, Ms. Charlotte Katzenmoyer is unavailable to participate this evening, but we hope to reschedule for her presentation at a future meeting date. We will now open the floor for courtesy of the floor. Just a few housekeeping reminders. You will have two minutes to share your comment. Mr. Parker will serve as our timekeeper. If you could please state your name and your address for the meeting record. If you don't feel comfortable sharing your address, please share the vicinity in which you live. And we will begin. To my far right, is there anyone that would like to offer public comment? Okay?
Sir, I'm sorry. Could we make sure that the microphone is on and that you speak clearly into the microphone so you can be heard? Thank you. I don't think it's on.
There's a button in the front. There should be a gray button on the other side. Can you see it? Okay, I think it's on now.
Are you able to hear me?
Okay, it's on.
So am I good to speak now?
Yes.
Yes.
My name is Michael Madden. I live on 901 Front Street. A couple of weeks ago, I reached out to some city council members requesting to join the zoning hearing board. Honorable Majors, I received an email back from you, and I sent you my resume and then my information about my background. I'm just wondering if the city council has talked about me joining the zoning hearing board or if I still should expect to wait a couple more weeks for any comment? And if it's a side that I shouldn't join, steps I can take to reconsider.
Am I allowed to respond, President Bowers?
Sure.
The conversation will be ongoing. I will have a conversation with our members, discuss about potential additions to the zoning hearing board. So expect some follow-up in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to my right that would like to offer public comment? Okay, seeing and hearing no one, anyone in the middle section? Okay, seeing and hearing no one, anyone to my left?
Good evening, council. I, as someone who's been watching the meetings for the last six months, I would like to remind you to please speak into the microphones and please speak clearly and to remind people who are up front to do so also. It was difficult for me to even hear you, and I'm only sitting over there. And I don't know if it's the acoustics in this building, but it's really difficult. I appreciate those of you who are modeling, mask-wearing. But again, it is still really important that we be able to hear you, especially if we aren't here in person. I would also just like to bring to our fore, as we are thinking about Martin Luther King Day, that while we have this Day of Service, which is really important, the one thing that hasn't changed is the way in which we talk about it. We always talk about it as giving back. And I think it's time for us to think about stop-taking and to hold people accountable who do take things from our community or who do drop things, dump things in our community. Because if I look at the arc of this day over the years, what I see is a lot more participation, but I see little change in the conditions in which people live in. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to my left that would like to offer public comment? Seeing and hearing no one, we will proceed with our meeting agenda. Next, we have approval of minutes for the legislative session of December 13th, 2022. Council members, are there any revisions to those minutes? Okay, seeing and hearing none, the minutes stand approved. We will now move to reports of committees. The first report you will hear this evening will come from me on behalf of the Administration Committee on the work session of January 3rd, 2023. On Tuesday, January 3rd, 2023, the Administration Committee met to discuss two resolutions. First, Resolution 78 of 2022, a resolution approving the disposition of surplus vehicles which have exhausted their useful life for city operations by the Bureau of Vehicle Management. Ms. Jessica Williams, Fleet Manager for the Bureau of Vehicle Management within the Department of Public Works, and Mr. David West, Public Works Director, were present on behalf of the administration to discuss the resolution. Ms. Williams shared that there are over 45 vehicles that need disposal due to the age and mileage of the vehicles which exceed repair costs. The vehicles will be released via a public auction. Council members asked questions regarding the public auction, revenue earned from the sales, and the timeline for action. Ms. Williams shared that gov deals will be used upon approval. There will be an auction service fee assessed of 15%, which is the winning bid percentage. Any revenue earned from the sales will become general revenue. Finally, Ms. Williams expects the timeline to be less than two months, so concluding by March. The second resolution discussed was Resolution 79 of 2022, a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a temporary construction easement with Capital Region Water for the property located at 1400 North 16th Street for the purpose of repairing and replacing a sewer pipe in the area adjacent to 17th and Hur Streets. Mr. Percy Bullock, project manager within the Bureau of Traffic and Engineering, was present on behalf of the administration. Mr. Bullock shared that the city property will be used to store construction items needed for the easement. A council member asked if there was a fee for the temporary easement. Solicitor Grover clarified that no fee was assessed for the temporary easement granted to Capital Region Water. I recommend my colleagues support Resolution 78 of 2022 and Resolution 79 of 2022. Resolution 78 of 2022 will authorize the release of vehicles that are no longer useful for the Bureau of Vehicle Management and ultimately generate revenue for the city of Harrisburg, while Resolution 79 of 2022 will aid Capital Region Water in repairing and replacing a sewer pipe, which will be beneficial to residents within the service area. This concludes the report of the Administration Committee. The next report you will hear will be from Chair Green on behalf of the Budget and Finance Committee on the work session of January 3rd, 2023. Chair Green?
Thank you, President Bowers. During the work session of Tuesday, January 3rd, 2023, the Budget and Finance Committee discussed Bill 14 of 2022, which is an ordinance implementing Act 57 of 2022 by amending the codified ordinance of the city of Harrisburg, Title V, Licensing and Taxation, Part V, Real Estate Taxes, by adding thereto Chapter 5-501.7 Notice and Waiver and directing the treasure of the city of Harrisburg to comply with the provisions thereof. We heard from the solicitor, Mr. Grover, who explained that this was a requirement by the state to be added to our tax ordinance and that essentially, anyone who purchases a home or property in the city of Harrisburg after the tax notices were sent out, that explained the penalties for paying late, would not have to pay those penalties or at least be advised that they don't have to pay those penalties since they purchased a property after the notice was sent out. I would recommend a positive and affirmative vote from my colleagues on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair Green. The final report you will hear this evening will be from Chair Rodriguez on behalf of the Public Safety Committee on the work session of January 3rd, 2023. Chair Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam President. On January 3rd of 2023, the Public Safety Committee met to discuss a pair of resolutions. First, Resolution 77 of 2022 is a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a license and service agreement with United Public Safety, Inc. to provide parking enforcement and management hardware and software to the city of Harrisburg, including handheld citation devices, the use of an online citation payment portal, digital storage, processing, and relate service, and further authorizing the imposition of third-party user fees for violators. Joining us was Deputy Sworson and Commissioner Tom Carter from the Harrisburg Police Department. Deputy gave a great breakdown of the logistics in this resolution for my colleagues on council. In general, this resolution is speaking to a new age of handheld and automated citation systems to be more efficient with combating traffic violations. Deputy spoke about Tyler Technologies not being on the table as suggested software, but the grant will be for three years. The grant will cover years '23, '24, and '25 and would not cost burden for the department at $25,925. The 2022 cost of Tyler would have been $33,636 with an annual cost of $16,011 for four years after. Price for the city to purchase the equipment outright for our parking enforcement officers would be $49,370 and an annual operating cost of near $8,160. Dolphin County currently has a current contract with UP Safety, but not the city of Harrisburg directly. I feel this technology will give a modern boost to traffic enforcement and draw in much-needed revenue from violators. Also, in committee business, we discussed Resolution 80 of 2022. Resolution 80 of 2022 is a resolution authorizing the city of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a domestic animal protection protective services agreement with Humane Society of Harrisburg. And that will be to provide services to the city of Harrisburg Animal Control Program. Deputy spoke about the annual contract with the Humane Society in regards to picking up stray animals in the city. $122 roughly for a dog. A pit bull will be $265.70, but a hundred pit bull limit will be in the contract. $135.70 for a cat, and of course, $51.50 for miscellaneous animals, from guinea pigs to chickens, as DC well-putted. Last year, we budgeted for $67,000. In 2023, we budgeted for $70,000 for these services. We spent $41,117.70 from last year's services, and they are still current invoices. We are still deliberating to see if we're responsible to pay, but the funds have already been set aside just in that case. Animal control is an important resource to have for our residents, and I highly encourage my colleagues on council to support Resolution 77 of 2022 and 80 of 2022. Thank you all. And that concludes the report for the Public Safety Committee meeting on January 3rd of 2023. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Chair Rodriguez. We will now move to ordinances for first reading. We have three. We will begin with Bill 1 of 2023. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes. Bill 1-2023, An Ordinance Appropriating Emergency Solutions Grants Program Funds from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for fiscal year 2022 and authorizing expenditure of such funds.
Thank you. Bill 1 of 2023 will move to the Building and Housing Committee. Next, we have Bill 2 of 2023. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes. Bill 2-2023, An Ordinance Appropriating Partial Home Investment Partnerships Program Funds from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for fiscal year 2020 and appropriating Home Investment Partnership Program Funds for fiscal year 2020. for fiscal year twenty twenty-two and authorizing expenditure of such funds.
Thank you. Bill Two of two thousand and twenty-three will also move to the Building and Housing Committee. Our final ordinance for first reading is Bill Three of two thousand twenty-three. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes. Bill Three dash twenty twenty-three, an ordinance appropriating Community Development Block Grant Program Funds from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for fiscal year twenty twenty-two and authorizing expenditure of such funds.
Thank you. Bill Three of twenty twenty-three will move to the Community and Economic Development Committee. We do not have any ordinances for amendment this evening. We have one ordinance for final passage. That's Bill fourteen of two thousand and twenty-two. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes. Bill fourteen dash twenty twenty-two, an ordinance implementing Act fifty-seven of twenty twenty-two by amending the codified ordinances of the City of Harrisburg, Title Five, Licensing and Taxation, Part Five, Real Estate Taxes by adding their to Chapter five dash five oh one point seven, Notice and Waiver, and directing the Treasurer of the City of Harrisburg to comply with the provisions thereof.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Bill fourteen of two thousand and twenty-two? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Parker, could you please call the vote?
Yes. Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Bill fourteen of twenty twenty-two passes unanimously, six yays to zero nays.
Thank you. We will now move to resolutions. Our first resolution for consideration this evening is Resolution seventy-seven of two thousand and twenty-two. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes. Resolution seventy-seven dash twenty twenty-two, a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a license and service agreement with United Public Safety Incorporated to provide parking enforcement and management hardware and software to the City of Harrisburg, including handheld citation devices, the use of an online citation payment portal, digital storage, processing, and related services, and further authorizing the imposition of third-party user fees for violators.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution seventy-seven of two thousand twenty-two? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Parker, could you please call the vote?
Yes. Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Resolution seventy-seven of twenty twenty-two passes unanimously, six yays to zero nays.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution seventy-eight of two thousand twenty-two. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes. Resolution seventy-eight dash twenty twenty-two, a resolution approving the disposition of surplus vehicles which have exhausted their useful life for city operations by the Bureau of Vehicle Management.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution seventy-eight of two thousand twenty-two? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Parker, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Resolution seventy-eight of twenty twenty-two passes unanimously, six yays to zero nays.
Thank you. Next, for consideration, we have Resolution seventy-nine of two thousand twenty-two. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes. Resolution seventy-nine dash twenty twenty-two, a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a temporary construction easement with Capital Region Water for the property located at fourteen hundred North Sixteenth Street for the purpose of repairing and replacing sewer pipe in the area adjacent to Seventeenth and Hur Streets.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution seventy-nine of two thousand twenty-two?
Just one quick question. Um, who ensures the easement?
Who ensure? I don't know. I'm, I'm not sure what you mean by ensures the easement. The easement is just a document that gets filed at the courthouse. So they have a right to be there. It's their construction project. Their outside contractors would have performance bonds that go with their bidding process. We, we are really doing nothing but, and being an additional insured by them uh, for the process. So if that's what, if that's what you mean. But they're really just situating the things on our land. Uh, insurance frankly won't mean a whole lot if there's some reason that something goes wrong on that land like others here.
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Okay, seeing and hearing none, uh, Mr. Parker, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Resolution seventy-nine of twenty twenty-two passes unanimously, six yays to zero nays.
Thank you. Our final resolution for consideration this evening is Resolution eighty of two thousand and twenty-two. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes. Resolution eighty dash twenty twenty-two, a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a domestic annual protective services agreement with the Humane Society of Harrisburg Area to provide services to the City of Harrisburg's Animal Control Program.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution eighty of two thousand twenty-two? Okay, seeing and hearing none, Mr. Parker, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Mattson, I'm sorry, Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
And Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Resolution eighty of twenty twenty-two passes unanimously, six yays to zero nays.
Mr. Parker, don't feel bad. It was bound to happen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next, we have Resolution One of two thousand and twenty-three. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes. Resolution One dash twenty twenty-three, a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter in a, into a professional services agreement with Dawood Engineering Incorporated to provide consulting services to assist with the redevelopment assistance capital program grant application and business plan.
Thank you. Resolution One of two thousand and twenty-three will move to the Administration Committee. Next, Resolution Two of two thousand and twenty-three. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes. Resolution Two dash twenty twenty-three, a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Halcyon Interpreting Services, L.L.C., to provide sign language interpreting services.
Thank you. Resolution Two of two thousand and twenty-three will also move to the Administration Committee. Next, we have Resolution Three of two thousand and twenty-three. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes. Resolution Three dash twenty twenty-three, a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to allocate and expend funding pursuant to the city's unused fiscal year twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and twenty twenty Home Investment Partnership Program awards, and to enter and negotiate into agreements necessary to effectuate the distribution of home funding.
Thank you. Resolution Three of two thousand and twenty-three will move to the Building and Housing Committee. Uh, next, we have Resolution Four of two thousand and twenty-three. Mr. Parker, could you please read it into the record?
Yes. Resolution Four dash twenty twenty-three, a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to convey the real property located at six forty-seven and six forty-nine Harris Street, Harrisburg, P.A., to the General Services Administration in furtherance of the federal courthouse in exchange for nominal consideration and perpet, I'm sorry, perpetual easement rights to the real property.
Thank you. Resolution Four of two thousand and twenty-three will move to the Administration Committee. Council members, is there any old business for discussion tonight? Okay, seeing and hearing none, new business, Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to celebrate, uh, the eleven new officers that were sworn in on January fifth of twenty-three. Um, those entail James Bard, Marco Benitez Soto, Elliot Christman, uh, Sean Sigic, Daniel Donovan, John Grant, Stephen Gray, Jared Nowisky, Thomas Oxenreider, Evan Ramos, Robert Tich, and that would actually take our complement up to a hundred and sixty officers. So good luck to all of the new, um, officers sworn in in the academy, and we pray as the Bureau's complement, um, nears closer to full, we will be able to start minimizing even more gun crime and violence in our community. So congratulations, gentlemen, and we expect great things. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Majors?
Uh, excuse me, thank you. Uh, just wanted to, as a reminder to, uh, our community and any families that may potentially be struggling to pay any, any heating bills as we're in these winter months, that, uh, lie heap is available, uh, to, to you as a option, uh, that can even receive a a, a grant in the form of cash assistance that can be directly paid to your utility companies, uh, so folks can go to, uh, the lie heap website that is available through the Department of Human Services. Application, you also can reach out to the county as well. We want individuals, uh, we don't want anyone to be struggling, uh, to, you know, heat themselves during these winter months. So, uh, that contact information is also available through City Harrisburg's website. Uh, well, as we talked about this before last year, uh, Mr. Mays will put it on our website. So individuals that are struggling, uh, to pay their bills can get assistance that way. Uh, additionally, I also wanted to, uh, as we are, uh, in January, um, it is a big month for a lot of our, uh, Anhellenic, uh, founders days. I wanted to give a big shout out to, uh, the fraternity, my fraternity, Beta Sigma Fraternity Incorporated, which just celebrated our hundred and ninth, uh, I'm, excuse me, Founder's Day yesterday, January ninth. And also, uh, don't want to leave anyone out, uh, are, uh, the ladies of Delta Sigma Theta, of which Councilwoman Rawls is a, uh, member. Uh, their Founder's Day is January thirteenth, uh, and President Bowers and my wife are both members of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, and their Founder's Day is January fifteenth. So just wanted to shout out to all of the fraternities and sororities. Uh, they are dynamic organizations that have, uh, been intricate, intricate to, uh, the African-American community. There are, uh, countless numbers of doctors, lawyers, and educators, not just across the country, but particularly in the City of Harrisburg, who with, uh, many of our lives would not be, uh, the same if those organizations, um, did not sell into us. So just wanted to shout out to all of those organizations and to, um, just give a big shout out. That's where, uh, finishing up the month of January. So thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Just a few housekeeping notes before we adjourn. Um, first, I wanted to note that we still have, we are still accepting applications for the vacancy for former Councilman Mattson's seat. The applications, uh, will close on Friday, January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. You can either physically come in and pick up a hard copy application to complete, available in the Office of the City Clerk and City Council, or you can complete, uh, an application electronically by visiting HarrisburgPA.gov. If you go to the Government tab, it's like the, in the left-hand corner, Office of City Council, you click there, and there'll be a blue banner, um, for applications. So again, the application deadline is this Friday, uh, January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, by the close of business. I also wanted to note that our next council meeting will be a work session on January twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three, at five thirty P.M. Council members, I don't have anything else?
Madam President, did you say Friday the thirteenth?
I did, but I'm not superstitious. I don't believe in those things. So yes, it's just Friday the thirteenth, and it's also Founder's Day for Councilwoman Rawls and the women of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. So that's what I'm speaking of when I say January thirteenth.
Um, President Bowers, if I may?
Yes.
Uh, I would be remiss if I would not mention the hundredth anniversary of the Kappa Omega Chapter of Omega Sci-Fi Fraternity Incorporated, uh, which will be celebrated on January twenty-eighth. Tickets are one hundred dollars and, uh, can be purchased by any, uh, member of that, of Kappa Omega Chapter, Omega Sci-Five Fraternity Incorporated. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other new business, council members?
President Bowers?
Yes.
Just one, one note for the council. Uh, Resolution Three and Bill Two are interrelated, which I advised you. It's the first real significant affordable housing program to come, and the group is time-sensitive. We are the last funders to the table, and they have a closing in February. Um, so there is going to be an ask that we have a vote by the twenty-fifth of, uh, January.
Thank you. We will not interfere with their closing, so we will, um, need to host a work session prior to our legislative session on January twenty-fifth. That is a Wednesday, just for everybody's reference. And that will begin at five thirty P.M. Our legislative session, I will begin immediately following. Okay, everyone, the time is six forty-three P.M. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We stand adjourned.